One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we move on to item three, our public comment section, something that our board discussed this week in our Board Governance Review with the IASB was, do we like to start each meeting with a reading of our mission, vision, and values, also known as our N's, for our school districts? So Carrie is going to start us by doing that tonight.
Yes. So, our District 65 mission statement is to provide each student with quality instruction, learning opportunities, and educational environments that inspire academic achievement, personal growth, and responsible citizenship. Our vision statement is excellence in education, enthusiasm for life, every student, every day.
Great. Thank you, Carrie. Always good to have those top of mind. Next, we'll move on to public comment. At every Board of Education meeting, we offer two opportunities for members of the public to address the board. If anybody would like to speak, identify yourself and approach the podium. I don't see anybody in the room. And I don't think we have anybody on Zoom.
No comments.
Okay, great. So we will have an opportunity at the end if anyone would like to join us later. Next up is addition of a discussion item. Again, at every board meeting, we offer the opportunity for board members to suggest a discussion item for future agendas. Does anyone have anything they'd like to suggest tonight?
Can we just give an every, all the discussion around it locally and statewide, could we talk about the new sex education standards at some point in the future?
Sure. That's a good idea. Okay.
Didn't a number of things come up in our session yesterday that we were going to add to future agenda items? I don't have it off the top of my head.
I'd like to add sandwich boards.
Sandwich boards.
Think we know what that means. Sandwich boards as in part of our...
As in placing sandwich boards around the community so people know when the meetings are.
Got it. So maybe a discussion on communicating and engagement with the community in line with our discussion in closed session yesterday. Excellent. Okay. Anybody else that need to add?
A strategic plan will be coming. So that was a topic that we talked about, but that's in the works. So that'll be added to our agenda in the future as well.
Great. And sure, I don't have to mention it tonight, if there's any other agenda item we'd like to have an open session meeting, you can certainly let Dr. Leal know. So great. Okay, moving on then to the bulk of our agenda tonight is in the discussion presentation section. We'll start with Teri Engler. I don't know if Lisa, if you want to do a quick intro?
I'm going to do just a very brief intro, and then Tracy's going to say some things. Teri's going to have a big lead in. So as we talked about a little bit last year, I just think it's nice with a new board for you to have an opportunity to get to know our legal teams and the people that keep us going from week to week and month to month. And beginning with Teri Engler from Engler, Callaway, Bastin, and Sraga. And Tracy is going to go ahead and introduce Teri because she gets to talk to Teri a lot.
I do. I do. And it's absolutely my honor to be able to introduce Teri Engler. So Teri is a founding partner of Engler, Callaway, Bastin, and Sraga LLC, a law firm that focuses its practice on the representation of public school districts and special education joint agreements. Teri received her undergraduate degree from Northwestern University in 1976 and worked as a high school Spanish teacher before earning her J.D. degree from Loyola University, Chicago in 1980. For the past four decades, her school law practice has been primarily concentrated in the areas of special education, disability law, and other student issues. Teri has successfully represented school districts and special education cooperatives throughout Illinois in administrative and judicial proceedings, including proceedings under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, and the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990 over the years. Teri is a member of many professional organizations in the fields of law education and has served as an adjunct professor at Loyola's, Loyola University's School of Law and School of Education, and on the Illinois Attorney General's Special Committee on Special Education, the Illinois Council of School Attorneys, Executive, and Special Education Committees, and the Special Education Advisory Board of National Lewis University. She regularly lectures on special education and other school law topics at local, state, and national conferences, training programs, and webinars, and has frequently been recognized by Chicago Magazine as an Illinois super lawyer in the area of schools and education. In 2008, the second edition of Teri's Resource Guide: Assistive Technology in Special Education was published by LRP Publications. And I just want to add to that that Teri is highly respected, revered for her knowledge and support that she provides to me, to our teachers, and to our administrators. So.
Teri Engler.
All I keep thinking is, and we have her cellphone.
Wow. You know, when I listen to that, I think I should just give, when I'm asked for a bio, just say she's an old-school lawyer and be done with it. But thank you for that very lovely introduction and welcome.
A Spanish teacher too.
Pardon me?
But a Spanish teacher too, which is pretty cool.
Yeah, you know what? My first teaching job was down the road at Sacred, Sacred Heart. I taught Spanish and English as a second language, 1976 to 79. So, no, 1770, 1970. It's a long time ago. You can tell how old it is. Well, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to do this and the invitation. I know how valuable your time is, having worked with Boards of Education for over 40 years. Lisa asked me to just kind of describe a little bit about the work our firm, that I or and/or my firm has done for the district over the years. Mark and Jay may be the only ones with enough institutional memory to know. I think I first, I was, I was asked, like, when did I get started up here? I think it was when Ben Martindale was in his first stint as your interim superintendent back in 2011. But it might have been a little bit before that. I had worked, Ben had been Director of Special Ed, and then Superintendent next door in Gurney 56. I knew him from there. And when I first started, it was really just me. It wasn't my entire law firm doing the legal work for your district. And even in the special ed area that I am probably most known for, and I do concentrate my practice primarily in the special ed, the student side of our, of our work. Over the years, I've done a lot of work in special ed for your district and what we would call a general student side, which is, you know, the constitutional law issues, student residency, student records, things along those lines. More recently, I've had partners that have done some work for your district in the area of employee discipline. I think we had one dismissal. We have done a lot of professional development for your district over the years and pretty much everything there is to teach administrators and staff about, in the area of special ed law, school law in general, some of the other student rights areas. Our firm is one of the handful of Illinois school law firms. There aren't that many of us, by the way. There's about a dozen school law firms that really specialize in this area. And so ours for years, especially the last five, but for the longest time, we have been on virtually every approved legal panel there is for school and school board insurance carriers. And you guys, of course, are under the Clic policy, and we are at the top of their list for litigation, which means we're approved to handle school litigation in all areas. So under board liability and errors and omissions and, you know, property, slip-and-fall cases, we do all of that. We've done, I think for Clic, most of the work we've done, though, has really been in the special ed arena for, for your district over the years. So that's sort of it. We're, we're, we're small but mighty, as we like to call ourselves. You know, the ranges of school law firms, I think they go everywhere from just a couple of attorneys to, our group is nine attorneys, and there's a handful of firms that are a little bit bigger in the twenties or maybe high twenties, maybe. But it's, you know, a uniquely boutique area, so you can't, you can't find a lot of people who come together to do this work. So that's it. I've been very fortunate to have as many experiences I've had. I've been, you know, the thing about special ed law is that we sped lawyers really don't get a lot of opportunities to talk directly to the board. You know, you, I'm sure you have much more frequent contact with the folks who do your collective bargaining or some of the other areas. And even when we do, and our firm does, and I have done for you some, we've reviewed your parent's student handbook several times over the years. We've done a lot of policy reviews in and outside of the student area. But, you know, every firm is kind of a little bit different. So ours is one that has always primarily been, you know, we have a split, I would tell you, in some districts. And, well, we have a lot of special ed cooperative clients, but setting that aside, including True North, where you are a member. So I do legal work for Curt and have known him.
I was just going to say that, that Teri advised co-op when I was on their board extensively the last couple of years in the student discipline and restraint issue. I forget exactly what they call that.
Timeout restraint. We were subject to a state complaint, right? So I do, I do a lot of that litigation, state complaint litigation, OCR complaint litigation, due process litigation, court litigation on appeals and that sort of thing. But through that relationship, I've kind of had another opportunity to kind of learn what your district's needs are, especially on the special ed side. But overall, I think I've been, I have worked with probably four or five different superintendents. I was thinking, the last time I was up here was when Jean Sophie's contract was being approved by your board. And you welcomed not only her but her husband, and her husband was in tears, and I remember being in the crowd for that. So it's a long way back. But I've had the pleasure of working with a lot of superintendents, a lot of directors of special education for your district, less so directly with the board. But I'm always mindful that I work for you, right? Our firm works for you. That, you know, our client is the Board of Education. Our job is to protect the board's interests and to support your compliance efforts and activities. You know, it's been interesting over the years to have longer relationships with clients because, you know, yours is one district that's just one example of, you know, we all faced COVID together. That was novel for everybody. And it was a challenge, and it was kind of a wonderful opportunity to collaborate. And it's still school law counseling, but some of the day-to-day issues were really quite unique to all of us. And, and so I had the pleasure of working with your district through a lot of those issues as well. So I'm just grateful for the opportunity. Many districts, as I was about to say, now use two or even three different law firms. When I was a much younger lawyer, it used to be one firm worked with the district or co-op. And, and over the years, that's really changed. And I think it's, it's probably in part because of how much broader and deeper school law issues have become, how much more intricate. And it's harder for school lawyers to be general school lawyers. Most of us now, you know, folks a little older than me, the next generation of my partner, Alan Sraga, and some of the, the older folks, Teri Hodges from, from Hodges-Louisey, you know, that generation, they all came up trained as general school lawyers, and they all did almost everything. They did the finance, and they did the special ed, and they did the board governance issues and the labor and employment issues. But that really has changed in the last 20 or 30 years in particular. So your district is similar to a lot of districts that uses more than one firm, and it allows you frankly to just choose who you think has the most and best experience in any given area and expertise and can give you the best advice. So I've been glad to be on your roster for a long time, and I thank you for that.
Thank you. Any questions for Teri?
I'm just curious, when you left teaching Spanish and went to law school, did you do so in order to be a school lawyer? Or did you connect the dots later?
No, I connected the dots later, actually. Growing up as a kid, I always wanted to be a Spanish teacher, and I did. And then when I got out of Northwestern, I had a number of friends who were lawyers. And I had one friend who was a labor and employment lawyer and who did work in schools. And I thought, ooh, that's sort of interesting. I'd like to learn more about that. So I did continue teaching my first two years, went to law school at night until the third year. And that's where I had the opportunity to study school law. Then I got out and I ran their education clinic for a while, and then I got into school work. Actually, I had a former student who said, I'm at a special ed law firm, and we need a lawyer. And I thought, well, gee, if I don't start practicing law soon, I'm never going to know how. So I actually started back in the eighties on the parent side of the fence, representing parents of children with disabilities against districts, never yours. But it, you know, after two years, I thought, I love schools. I like working with schools. I can do more for kids representing schools, right? And using every case you get as a good learning opportunity. It's probably the best learning opportunity, I would say, in some respects. And I've been doing that ever since. So my, my partner likes to laugh and say, I saw the light and switched to the right side while I still had a chance. So I've been doing this an awful long time.
I know I say it a lot, but between Tracy and every member of the Engler firm, we are in tremendously good hands. My first year, we were struggling a lot with staffing and all sorts of unique situations. And your colleagues and you helped us out tremendously. It was one of the main reasons that we had such a successful year. Special education law is very tricky, and there's a lot that goes into it. And Teri and her colleagues are extremely responsive and knowledgeable, and we're just very grateful for the board's support and being able to work with them.
Thank you. I appreciate. I don't get, you know, I'm not called in when things are happy and positive. I don't get to talk to boards and just say, hi, it's me. So this is a very lovely experience. Thank you. Usually, I'm only dealing with it when it's hit the fan or it's about. So thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it and appreciate the opportunity to stay your partner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll move on to item B, Board and Administration School Safety Reports.
Okay. Amy's going to share the presentation here, and Jay and I are probably going to tag-team some of this. But obviously, as we've talked about, just in informal ways and also through formal board updates, safety and security has been a major priority for us the whole time that I've been here. But obviously, with recent events, we've been evaluating other aspects of school safety and security. So tonight, we're just going to be talking a little bit about some of the work that we've done and what types of things we'd like to do in the future to make sure that we stay continuously improving in this area for our students. So as always, we want to think about our mission and vision. And, you know, as we talked about yesterday, our strategic plan indicates that, you know, part of our goal is to make sure that we have an educational environment that facilitates learning at high levels and making sure that our students feel safe and a sense of belonging. So when we talk about safety and security, it's not just physical safety that we're talking about. We're also talking about ensuring that all of our students feel, feel safe psychologically and emotionally when they're with us as well. Okay. So this, this is a goal that I was specifically referring to, the climate and culture that leads to strong learning outcomes, that students feel safe and are treated with respect, that our staff enjoy working with our, in our schools, that our parents and families feel comfortable, and that our students are getting to us safely. So there's lots of aspects of school safety that we talk about. So we have been very lucky to work with our partners in the community on this all summer and even since I, since I arrived and before that, specifically the Village of Lake Bluff, our police and fire departments, our library and park district. And I really do feel like we have partners in this work. I feel like we have people that we can call on whenever we are considering plans for students or plans for our, our schools when they might be in crisis. And we are not alone in that. Lake Bluff absolutely pulls together as a community, and we think about plans together, not in isolation. So we're going to be presenting an update on the efforts that we've made with our partners this summer and some items that we've been talking about internally to make sure that we're staying on top of this. So we'll start with facility improvements. And just as background, you know, every single year, the Regional Office of Education does a health, life, safety audit. So this happens every year. We go through a checklist of items. I think ours is happening next week for this year. And the fire marshal comes, and we have some, an inspector that goes through a checklist from the regional office, all the things that we need to do to make sure our facilities are up to date. This particular summer, we did specific walkthroughs with the Lake Bluff Police Department and all of the officers. And so we had multiple walkthroughs where Jay and the principals and I walked through together to just hear their thoughts and hear their observations about our facility and make sure that they feel comfortable coming into our facilities, knowing where the exits are, where, where there might be some challenge areas and things like that. And then they made some suggestions to us. So these are some of the things that we are considering in terms of additional equipment or surveillance. The first one has to do with the fact that we have cameras that are focused on the perimeter of the building. However, they're not actively monitored at all times. So the suggestion from the police department was to put some monitors in our front offices where we always have staff that have the ability to look at a monitor. And our cameras are good. They, they don't show everything that happens until there's movement. So that would be an easy thing for us to actively monitor all day long. We talked a little bit about reinforcing our front offices and vestibules in a variety of ways. And just, I didn't say this at the beginning, but we are talking at high levels tonight because obviously what we don't want to do is put out all the details of our safety and security plans for everyone to see online. But we're talking about the glass. We're talking about furniture. We're talking about doorways. So some specific suggestions were made on ways that we could reinforce those front offices and vestibules a little bit better. We're looking at large planters. So permanently installed planters are those like target balls out in the front of the Target, specifically for the front of Lake Bluff Elementary, because we have experience in the past where folks think that that's just like a extended driveway to just drive right up and deliver food or, you know, do whatever needs to be done. And obviously, that's a security issue that we want to make sure that we, you know, provide some obstacles there for that. We also...
Those can be done to look nice, too. They don't have to be ugly.
They can. No. And, you know, yeah, like, well, you know, it matches Targets, Monty. But Jay's been looking at different.
Different options.
Options.
That will look nice.
Obviously, also can be a dual purpose. Kelly's kind of excited to have some things that kids can line up behind and kind of help them to see spatially where they should be when they're lining up or coming in the building. So lots of extra.
Could have a grade-by-grade bollard or something.
That's right. Yeah. We did find just a few vulnerabilities in some of our outside facility areas where kids might be able to get into a space that really isn't safe for them. So looking at closing up some of those gaps. And then maybe Jay can talk a little bit about, we've had camera access in our buildings, and we've had surveillance, and we've had a partnership with the PD, but we've also been working on just making sure that's up to date.
Right. So we have a system that they can access, and right now, they have to VPN into our, racing onto our network in order to see it. We're looking at moving to a more web-based system where they'll have access to our cameras even just from their police cars or from their handheld devices. So onsite, they're going to have access. We're also looking at just expanded coverage. There are some spots that we'd like to have better, maybe add some cameras to have some more views of the exterior of the building. So we're working on improving those, those things.
Do we have coverage on like public spaces in, on the interiors of the building?
We do.
We do.
And so right now, our agreement with the police department, they only can access those cameras with our permission or during an emergency. So they don't just, they can't just turn on the cameras and see, see what's going on. But, but in an event of emergency or if they have a need, they can call us and we can grant them permission to access the cameras. They've also got building access. They have FOBs for the building, so they have access. And we're working out an agreement on how to use those FOBs currently. But it's a similar thing where they can use it either when they're planning to be here or in case of emergency, or if they're walking, doing night. A lot of times, they walk around at night and make sure the doors are locked and that everything's going, going fine. And if they see something or feel like there's an issue, that they, they have the ability to enter the building and check it out.
So you will see an updated intergovernmental agreement coming soon. We've been back and forth a couple of different times to make sure the wording is right and accounts for emergency and non-emergency access and following security protocols and things like that.
And I know we don't like to present the details of our security plan. It makes sense. But it, it might be, I don't know if we do it or not, but do we, do we have signage around the schools that say that, whatever the appropriate signage is, says, "Security cameras in use"?
We do, yeah. Before we installed on that was one thing that our legal...
Yeah, that seems smart.
Attorney's advice is to do.
Let everybody know that, too.
No, signs are posted on all the entries that cameras are in use.
We already have an agreement with the police department on their camera use.
Correct.
Correct.
We're just updating it to include the FOBs and the different kind of access, like the expanded coverage.
And are there privacy? I, I'm sure there's privacy.
There's language in there about privacy and confidentiality. Yep. And that is a concern, for sure. In some districts, you know, in fact, some of the buildings that we've gone to see in the last six months, not many, but a few that have upgraded their facilities or, you know, introduced new furniture or things like that, have decided to do less or none in terms of security and surveillance cameras and footage for that reason. Most, though, districts in our area and in surrounding areas do like to have camera surveillance and the ability to go back or to be able to see in a building when an emergency is happening. So. Any other questions on this part? Okay, we'll move on. Some of what the police also suggested were some improvements to just processes and procedures. So just a couple of suggestions about additional routine maintenance. So we've done, when we renovated the buildings or built the buildings, there were some security features that were put in to, say, lock a, a door from the inside and just barricade that. And we found that there were some things that we just need to make sure we routinely go ahead and do to make sure everything's working right. We do our, our one lockdown a year, but obviously, we need a little bit more in terms of spot checking. And that's what we talked about with an increased partnership with the police department. They typically are only with us during a lockdown drill or something like that, or if there's an emergency or if a special presentation. And we asked if they would be willing to kind of be a little bit more of a presence in the building and do some maybe lunch and learns with our staff in the faculty lounge, or do some of those spot checks in our classrooms to just kind of get our teachers' minds in the space of, you know, what would you do if this were happening? Not when students are present, but just to talk through with teachers, some of those situations, to make sure we're feeling a little bit more prepared. And then obviously, we have partner organizations that help us with additional training and practice. And that goes even to de-escalation techniques with student-to-student safety, our fire and police departments, and any other kind of organization that would help us with additional training. So we're looking into those things. And then I did want to talk a little bit about the fact that there are, there is a crisis, or I shouldn't say, mental health initiative that's happening in Vernon Township that I've been invited to be a partner with as a parent and educator. And they're looking at a model of crisis preparedness that would include a mental health component and also kind of a plan, a flowchart type of a plan for a community emergency that is modeled, it's going to be modeled after what happened in Highland Park this summer. And just kind of deconstructing that event and looking at all the community facilities and taking the data into account to say, you know, for this type of a situation, you need to look for a facility that has this many private rooms or this many big, large spaces. And then you'll need to, you know, gather these types of community members and have every, you know, what's the chain of command and those kinds of things. So I think it's really interesting and good work. And there are some blueprints out there that are either in place or being written right now. And I know that our community would be more than happy to engage in that kind of work. And just, I think that's a good plan for us to be involved in and to be a part of. You never want to think about it. But there were a lot of hiccups that happened, even as smooth as things went in Highland Park, that we can hopefully be prepared for if anything were to happen in our area. And then obviously, we also work with the park district on reunification and evacuation plans and articulate with Lake Forest as well. Okay. As we've talked about, as a board, we're also reviewing and drafting a possible resolution on some safety items. And that happened at our last special board meeting, I think it was last week, which may include some action items that would perhaps include curricular enhancements or additional programming for students, or enhancements to our communication out to the community and parents with regard to safety, weapon safety at home, or secure storage. And then we have right now, Parent Educational Opportunities, the Parent Safety Series that we are participating in with Lake Bluff, sorry, Lake Forest Districts. That will be a four-part series this, this year. We encourage all of our parents to attend those. The topics will range from school resource officers to active threats, to stop-the-bleed training, and online internet safety for kids. And then we also talked about investigating the Be Smart Series, which is a program that is designed to help parents and caregivers understand a little bit more about safe weapon storage in their homes. As you know, we're also looking at some ways that we can legislatively, be legislative advocates. And Amy and Andy are representatives on the tri-district Legislative Advocacy with Committee with Lake Forest Districts. But it's, it's a little bit bigger than just Lake Forest. I know other districts are involved in that as well. I think Highland Park has been there, maybe Deerfield. So it's sort of becoming a little bit of a bigger group, as well as our participation in EdRed that's beginning this year. So these are some additional items for discussion. Obviously, if you have questions on anything that we talked about. But some of the conversations that we're going to have to have, and they can begin tonight, but we've been talking about them, is obviously, one thing that's been hard for us is to address the mental health and wellness needs of our students. We have currently additional SEL support for our students that was planned to be phased out this year. So I think as we move through this year, we will have recommendations of whether we feel comfortable phasing those out or if we need additional time. But that will come up again as a conversation. As well as SEL support for the adults in the system and wellness for that. We are working on some solutions. Lead has been generous in helping support us with adult counseling last year, and some of that will continue this year for those who are interested. It was very well-received by everyone. Most people... It was very well received by everyone, most people who participated in it, so we're finding ways that we can keep incorporating that. And then also, continue to talk to our village partners about whether that's something we would want to share in intergovernmental position, you know, position that might help support police, fire, village, library, park district. And then, the final issue, aside from some kind of singleton suggestions from parents about maybe reinforcing playgrounds and things like that, obviously, we always talk about additional supervision, making sure that we have people where they need to be. The other big item that's come up from parents is school resource officer. And so, that's not unique to us. Whenever there's a school shooting, the question of whether or not we should have a school resource officer is kind of always put back out there to see if it should be something that we should incorporate into our plan. Many schools around us have them. Typically, they're in high schools and a little less so in middle schools, and fairly rarely do you see one in just an elementary school. They're typically shared between middle and elementary if it's that type of a district, or they're housed in a high school. Lake Forest does have a school resource officer for District 115. They also have one for District 67 that's shared between the middle schools and the elementary schools. So, I'm opening that up for either discussion tonight or to be added on to an additional agenda item, more specifically geared towards school resource officer, but I did want to let you know that we've been talking about it. We've talked with the Police Department, obviously with the village, as they manage the police resources. One idea that we have thought of is that if we don't feel completely compelled to add that position immediately, this increased partnership with the Police Department this year and having them on campus more, I told you, we have some parking spots for non-emergency work, just integrating them a little bit more into our system and getting them comfortable with providing more training to our teachers, maybe building some informal relationships with kids, but not really being on staff, might be a nice interim place for us to go and then evaluate in the future if we really think we need a full-time staff member in District 65 for that purpose. So, but again, I'm opening it up because I know this has been definitely a topic and want to make sure everyone has the opportunity to weigh in.
Can I ask a question about the SEL support? What is the current, how big is that? Is that a two or one and a half? What was the-
Two people. We have a-
Right, so right now, that's what we're at.
Right, it's two people, and one was hired before I got here and was contracted through True North before I arrived, right? Chelsea? Yeah, come on up.
So, we did add that position before Lisa arrived, but her actual first year was that first year, the 2020-2021 school year, and then the year after that, we added the position, the second position. So, one person is housed in the elementary school right now, and one person is housed in the middle school. They're each working on the Tier One SEL curriculum that all students receive, and then have some other responsibilities along with that in terms of SEL support, behavioral support.
Because, just as additional background, prior to last year, social workers taught the Tier One SEL curriculum, and we have shifted that back to our classroom teachers. And so, the additional stopgap was to help our teachers be able to implement the Tier One social-emotional curriculum in their classrooms, which would also free up our social workers and psychs for additional direct support, which we were finding the need for as well.
Is there state funding for school resource officers?
No.
Not yet.
How does sharing a resource officer look like across schools?
So, it depends on the model, and I think we, you know, we would have to be really intentional about how we wanted to divide that time up. The point of having a school resource officer is not to have an armed police officer all the time everywhere. Obviously, that wouldn't do the trick. It really, the most successful programs really are about building relationships with students, being a supportive community partner, maybe being a liaison between first responders and the school district. They are not involved in discipline, they're not involved in behavior. And so, the sharing of it really would depend on the needs of the day and kind of what's happening in all the buildings and where they may have scheduled time to be in with classes or kids or at certain events. So, that would, we would have to design that pretty intentionally for how we wanted it to look.
Did you say that parents have been asking about this?
Yeah, I think, and again, after an event, right, there's more communication that comes up around this, and I would say the spring was tough because we had a school shooting and then less than a couple of months later, we had the event in Highland Park. And so, obviously, that makes, you know, everyone gets a little nervous, myself included. I mean, it's really hard to drop your students off after events like that and feel completely comfortable that everyone is safe. So, we have received this question a few times of whether or not we're considering it. We've also received questions about whether or not we're considering having parent volunteers who are armed be on campus or on the playgrounds, or if we've considered having additional security guards at the playgrounds for recess time and things like that. So, I feel most comfortable that an SRO would be the best solution to that type of concern. The ability for us to have a volunteer group that I would feel comfortable enough that they would be consistently there, that I could say, "This is something we have all the time, every day." I have fairly low confidence that we would be able to actually solicit that kind of support, even if we wanted it. So those are mainly the types of questions in terms of additional personnel.
I would say right off the bat, I get a really bad gut reaction when I talk about armed volunteers on our campuses. I am very uncomfortable with that. I'm pretty uncomfortable with the SRO idea, given some of what I've read in the article that Tim provided. It's such mixed results. There's not a lot of research to show that it really has a dramatic increase in impact, favorable impact. It's not, doesn't show that it has a bad impact, but it's not conclusive. And so, I don't necessarily know that it's the best way to go, but-
Yeah, that can-
That's better to me than armed volunteers.
Both of your points I agree with, and I'm still trying to figure out like, what the entire point would be if they're not involved in issue, I mean, they're there to protect the kids in case of a catastrophic incident, then what if they're not there all the time and then-
Well, I think that's only part of it, right? I think it's more, like, for example, when I was growing up, even in high school, we had a school resource officer. It's not always called him, but he was a policeman who was there all the time, right? And the idea, my understanding is, is that it's more like, you know, a safe person who builds relationships with kids so that when kids see something, they feel comfortable going to somebody and saying something. It's not just to be there to prevent a catastrophic horrible incident, right?
I think that's where those articles kind of shed some light on that. If that's the whole purpose, it is not effective for that. But really good SRO programs have been able to support community partnership with the police, a feeling of safety and security, kids feeling, like you said, comfortable and safe with a member of the community to say when they're feeling unsafe or they see something. And obviously, that's a big part of our campaign with kids directly, is if you see something that makes you nervous, you need to let us know so that we can help you. I have-
Go ahead.
Like a logistics question, an SRO, is that our employee or is that a Police Department employee, and how does that work?
So typically, they are shared because we wouldn't have a need for them all year, and they do need to be liaison with the department and be very closely working with the department. So typically, it's a shared position, and the intergovernmental agreement would detail who paid for what or what percentage, what percentage of the year, they're located in which place. And, you know, we have lots of models in the area of, you know, agreements that we could look at if we decided to do that, but no, it would not be fully funded.
So it's a shared-
It would be a shared, ideally, we'd want it to be a shared position because they should be part of our Lake Bluff Police Department.
Have you had preliminary conversations with the village about their receptiveness to this?
Yeah. And I would say that's part of where we came up with the plan this year to kind of increase informal partnership and see how that goes. And I think there are questions about whether or not this is appropriate, given our proximity to the Police Department, how quickly they can get to us. Not every community has that luxury. I mean, we have police and fire that are very, very close to both of our buildings and very responsive. So, that's part of what we're weighing as well, as well as kind of what would the purpose be, what would that day look like, and what would they be involved in? Obviously, they would be working with the Lake Forest School Resource Officers, they would be part of any kind of programming that happened that we did, but those would be details we would have to figure out.
I get it a little bit more for high school students. I think there are a different array of issues that can come up in high schools, right? So in my opinion, it deserves a little bit more discussion and looking into for our district. But can you talk just a little bit about what our partnership looks like with them, with the Police Department right now? Like, I know they're always willing to be there at dismissal and arrival when we ask them, or-
Yeah, and I would say-
They're around a lot already.
They are around a lot. It's, they're a small department, so sometimes it's been difficult to have staff at big events or arrival and dismissal every single day. But every time that we've said, "There's a special event, we need somebody there," you know, Chief Haskin last year and now Chief Swenzinski, who's awesome, they're both amazing and will do anything they can to support us. So the partnership is absolutely supportive for us. It's been a little less involved, I think, in the past. I'm not sure the reasons for that, but they're very open to working with us on any kind of programming. Like, we started the bike safety thing last year at LVES, that's something that Regis Charlo wanted us to really think about doing. And so, they're very open to all those things. Like I said, the walkthroughs this summer, the audits, the suggestions, they're there to help us. So, I don't know that we've fully explored the partnership with what we have now. So that's why I think maybe taking this year to see how this increased sort of informal partnership goes might be a good way for us to evaluate whether or not we need additional support.
Well, going with that, I would like to see the kids more involved in it and maybe do like a basketball game with the police officers or something so that they get that personal connection with those faces that they see out in the community and that type of thing.
Comfort level with them, right?
Yeah.
There was-
If it is coming to, you want them to have that comfort level. If they don't, you know, if something happened or they saw something and you want them to get that connection.
Not just think of them as-
Yeah.
There's such a power difference.
Yeah, we used to have lunch with ours, now that you're all reminding me when we were kids. We didn't have SROs, but we had Dare, and we had, I don't remember his name, but he was like on the playground, we ate lunch with him, like it was once a month, and it was really exciting because we knew a police officer.
I will say, there was a, there were plans in the works for a ride to school this year, which we just didn't get, but Deputy Chief Gurkey was on-site in his bike and helmet, like around on both campuses, and we were trying to get maybe everyone to meet at the Police Department and ride to school together. So that is still in the works. So a lot of these things they'd be open to.
Yeah.
I really, yeah.
Just playing basketball process or, you know, some of that fun kid stuff to get that connection in would be great.
So my question is, do we want to keep discussing here? Do we want to add this to another agenda for more discussion?
I mean, I felt that it was my obligation to bring it to you, as we did have many parents ask about increased security in this type of a position. So, yeah, I'm just looking for a little direction on if you feel like we're on the right road and we'd like to take this year to think more about it, or if we want to have a more formal presentation and recommendation from the administrative team.
I feel like I would need to know a little more before moving forward, because I think, well, we hope they would come to teachers or social workers, and I love the idea of them having a relationship with police officers, but how much do we want to put into that if they're still going to be closer to the teachers or someone else in the school?
Yeah, they were saying in some of those articles how mental health was a lot more important than having somebody armed in a school, so maybe, especially if we're going to budget for something of this nature, I would love to see more data and like have an agenda item.
Yeah, I'd like to add it to a future agenda for sure, and would be interested to hear the administration's recommendation, because I don't think you're at a place yet where you're ready to do that. I didn't hear that tonight at least, so I think, I think that would be helpful, too, and some rationale and some recommendations that we could consider. But I think a further discussion would be great. I was prepared for this conversation, but not specifically to talk about school resource officer, given this was not on the agenda. So I think that while I read those articles, and I think there's lots of great stuff in there, I've also been in and worked closely with schools where it's worked really well, and I've been in and worked closely with schools where it hasn't. So I think more about kind of what the administration would like to see and, so I don't know what your timeframe is on that, but a future agenda would be great.
If we're comfortable with this increased presence and partnership this year, then I'd like to collect some of the data from those activities and have a little bit more discussion with the police and the principals and potentially, teachers that interact with the police in a different way to inform the recommendation going forward, because I'm not sure that I have yet a recommendation. This is a different year than the last two years, so far in a much better way, and I'm looking forward to seeing how we move through the year and what our needs really are.
I think that sounds good, and I would say that from what you've shown us here tonight too, I do think we're on the right track. You know, I like the idea that there are certain action items of things we can update or look into that can make us more secure, but that we also know we do a good job with security in our buildings already. So yes, I don't think there's a huge hole we need to fill, it's just, let's keep looking and seeing what happens.
I would ask that we, if it exists, we try to make data and evidence-based decisions. These articles were really helpful as an introduction, but they also seem to indicate that there's not a ton of research out there on this subject. But I don't want us going based on our gut instinct that I think we should be arming teachers because that's how I feel, or volunteers and, you know, I want to see some science behind it that we can make really smart decisions, if it exists.
I agree with that, but I will also say that it's really hard to study, and this is where those are lacking, what might have been prevented by having the presence. You know, so that's what it's hard to, that's why I think, yeah, more discussion, more data, more conversation, but it's a really hard thing to be completely data-driven.
Because you can't do a blind, double-blind study on anything like that. It's totally immoral.
Yes, more discussion, more data, but also more continuing with the safety protocols that we have now.
And a lot of gratitude to the Lake Bluff Police for having an increased presence and for just, not just at the school buildings during drop-off and pickup, but also, I think, just at some of the meetings we've had around here that have impacted schools and students and teachers, and I think that's been well-received. We are lucky that we have a really community-facing police department, though. There's a lot of, a lot of school districts struggle with that, so we're lucky in that regard.
I love the idea too, of what you guys were talking about, anything you can do to make kids more comfortable around police officers so they don't think of them as, that they think of them as they're on the same team. You know, the comfort level has to increase, so.
Anything else on school safety or any other discussion or questions for Dr. Lee Alley?
I just want to say one quick thing. I appreciate you being cognizant of making the schools more safe, but also making sure they remain welcoming places, because I think that's important, too. So, that's all.
Thank you.
It's a good point.
Good point, Tim.
Yep.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you, Dr. Lee Alley. All right, so we'll move on to Item C, which is the Board Governance Review Report. A little context, was that yesterday?
That was yesterday.
That was yesterday. Yesterday, we had a Board Governance Review with Illinois Association of School Boards with our rep Laura Martinez and discussed ourselves as a board and kind of evaluating our own processes, protocols, progress, and some priorities for the future. So, I don't know, if you wanted to kick this off, Dr. Lee Alley?
Sure.
Open for discussion.
So, this is, we've done this now three, three times. I think we've had a session like this, and we meet with our Illinois Association of School Boards representative, and this particular time, everyone took a survey of the primary board responsibilities. We got some results of board perceptions of how the board has been functioning, as well as the relationship that the board has to the superintendent and vice versa, and we were able to have some discussion around that information and how we feel we're doing in those areas, and then also think about future items for us to tackle at open board meetings. So, in these sessions that are closed, it really is just about current functioning and how our perceptions are of how we work together and to govern, but any future planning needs to happen in an open session. So, we mentioned some of the agenda items at the beginning for additional agenda items, but I just put it on in case anyone wanted to share anything that came out of that meeting for you.
I think what came out for me is that we should have a discussion in an open session, because I think there are a lot of great things that were presented. So I'd be open to doing that as soon as we could fit it in to an agenda and open to everybody else's.
It, it might, it might be, might be smart to kind of highlight some of the, the big takeaways from yesterday. I can do a couple, but I'm, I'm sure I'll miss a few. You know, we, we, it seemed that it was very important to the board that we spend more time focusing on how we communicate with the community, engage the community. Um, and that's wrought with challenges, but something we should always pursue. Uh, it became apparent or was brought to the top of the list that we really need to refresh and update our strategic plan because we've stormed through much of that over the past several years and it's, uh, it's ready for an update to get the community involved. Um, what else? There's several big ones.
I'd say there was one, we, we wanted to, um, talk about how we recruit future board members. You know, we're going to have at least one, um, spot open in the coming election and how we, um, find maybe some board members who, who maybe don't have people in the school or who are non-users of our school or, or different in other ways. So, um, that was one thing that came up. And I think it also is a positive thing, you know, showed that we have a very effective board and superintendent relationship. I think that was, that was really strong in the data too.
I'm really good about that.
There is an election coming up, right? So if people are in the community interested in running for office, don't hesitate to reach out to anybody on the board to give you some background on what we do. Uh, your paperwork is due by the end of December. I don't know the exact date, but if you intend to run in an April election, April of 23, your paperwork is due in December of this year. So spread the word.
And I will say one of the ideas we discussed in the closed session, we've already implemented. So we can check that off the list in reading the, remembering to read the mission and vision every meeting. So that's great. Um, so are we decided we're going to add that to a future agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Any other comments or questions about that or review from yesterday?
Me, community engagement to the future agenda item.
I guess the question is, do we want to add community engagement or do we, do we want to add more than just that? That's a good question. Community engagement, I think for sure came up. Is there anything else that came out of that that we want to add separately?
Aside from strategic planning.
Yeah.
I think it was our goal review, which fell into strategic planning.
Okay. So just those two separate.
Our meeting frequency and stuff. I know it's something we've talked about.
Yep. Yeah. Frequency and location, right? Okay, great. Okay, thank you. Uh, next up is item D, which is a sixth day enrollment review. And we do have an updated memo, uh, updated from the board packet. So I don't know if this is Lisa or Tracy?
That is Tracy.
Okay.
Um, but I just want to update that this is just an annual report that we have to submit to the state on our enrollment numbers, um, over the years. And so, um, this is just presented as an FYI for the board.
Yeah. And, and not much here, very short. Um, as Lisa said, we do, um, take this data on the six-day enrollment every year. This is just a data point in time. So we can, um, look, look at that data year after year. Um, and it is presented to our, or sent into our regional office of education and then sent along to the state level. Um, so you can see here that our enrollment is relatively flat. We did, um, graduate a larger class of eighth graders, but that was, those numbers were made up by, uh, new students enrolling at the elementary school level. Um, we do have a lower number of, um, pre-K three students, but we know that we've held some spots for some of our students who come up through early intervention. And so we do anticipate that those open spots will, will be filled throughout the school year. Um, so, yeah. Any questions?
So just to, just to clarify, this is not something the board approves or votes on. This is just a report that goes, this is FYI.
This is just for your own, yep, your information. Every year you'll, um, receive this memo with the updated numbers. Um, and we just look at, we do look at these numbers over time. Um, we look at them annually in terms of staffing and planning for each school year. Um, and we pull enrollment a few times throughout the school year when we look at it as an administrative team.
Okay. I think, I think this has come up in the past, Tracy. Somewhere do we, cause I get asked pretty regularly about enrollment. Is it up or down? Just by people in the community. And I think we asked once in the past about posting somewhere online the, the, just the ongoing trend of the, of these six-day enrollments. So people could look it up if they're interested. Does that ring any bells?
Yes. So, and I think you had asked about 10-year, kind of over 10 years.
Yeah. If we can keep that moving forward, that would probably be smart.
Yes. And so one of the things that, um, I was going to look into is, um, getting some of that data from the ROE, ROE to make sure that it's clean data.
Yeah.
Um, Margaret and I have spent some time looking through our Power School data to see if we could pull previous years correctly. And so once those students are unenrolled, it's not correct going back if we do it. And so we do need to, um, either look back through old memos or, um, get that data directly from the regional office of education to make sure that it's, um, clean data.
Yeah. I get asked fairly regularly about it. So it's 861 students, by the way, in case anybody's listening and is curious.
And we did, um, I think over the last couple of years, see some dips and some spikes in, in enrollment due to COVID. Um, but now it, it seems to have leveled off in terms of, um, new students.
Yeah. Back in the day, it was like 1150, 1200 kids, I think, once upon a time, a long time ago.
Yeah. And I do want to mention too, the enrollment data is on illinorreportcard.com. So you can find all kinds of demographic information on Illinois Report Card and you can find historical information as well.
Also in our comprehensive annual financial report that is on our website, it lists, um, history back probably 20, 20 years. There's lots of enrollment data in there.
I did have a question. I'm sorry. I meant to bring this up earlier. So like first grade, is it first grade in 21, 22? And now they're in second grade for 22, 23?
Yeah, correct. So you would have to kind of look over. So the first grade last year was 92 students. Now they're second graders, so they're 95.
Oh, okay.
So that cohort, as you look through, they've actually gained three students in that particular cohort of students.
But you still have challenges within a grade of rearranging teaching assignments, I would imagine.
Yes, at the elementary school.
Second and sixth grade look like some big changes, right?
Yes. And, and the middle school runs on a middle school model and so therefore the numbers of students may grow and, um, or decrease within different sections of classes at the elementary school. That's where we really look at how many teachers are in a specific grade level because, um, they stay with their same teacher all day long. So, um, it's, it's, I think it's a little bit more impactful at the elementary school when you have either large increases or large decreases as those teachers, maybe one or two teachers might need to move a grade level, um, or shift in a given year.
Last question, um, for me at least. The changes, like let's say for eighth grade, seventh, eighth grade, like are they somewhere else or do we have any dropout situations?
Yeah. Um, we don't have any students who've dropped out that I'm aware of.
Are always like registered somewhere.
Correct. Yes. Um, they could potentially be homeschooled.
I'm just wondering.
Um, is a possibility.
Like if they moved to another district.
But they have moved to another district. They've moved out of state. They've moved to a private school. They've.
No, like delinquent. Okay.
No, we do not have any, um, students who, um, have just dropped out and are just completely unenrolled in schools.
Any other questions? Thank you, Tracy.
Thanks.
All right. Move on to item E, which is EdRed.
So this is just a standing item on our agenda as we asked. Um, for this month, I'm just asking if anyone would like to join me for the kickoff meeting on October 6th from 12, 12 to 2:30 in Oak Brook. Um, they'll be announcing their legislative priorities. Okay. And we can have more than one.
I'd go too.
Gary and Tim?
Okay.
Awesome. Great. Uh, I'll turn it over to Jay for, uh, renewal of our Quest contract.
Okay. So both, uh, both F and G, the renewal of the Quest contract and the train agreement, these are renewals of existing agreements. The Quest, um, contract is sort of works in tandem with our intergovernmental agreement with Lake Forest, um, 67. And this is an agreement that we have with Quest that, um, kind of lays on top of that other IGA. And it, the purpose is to mitigate, uh, the risk, our risk, um, of having large losses. And it also sort of aligns our incentives because the way the intergovernmental agreement works is that Lake Bluff School District, um, retains all the costs and all the revenues of the food service program. And we just pay a fee to Quest to run the program. And so this, uh, when we were looking at whether to retain Quest or not, this, we worked out this agreement to kind of make, align our interests and make it in our best interest to, uh, to continue on with Quest. So this is a, um, a renewal of that agreement. I would recommend that we renew it again. This actually should have been done in May and, uh, we sort of lost track of it. So this, we're doing it a little bit late. And then the train agreement is, um, basically a service agreement for all of our HVAC equipment. And, uh, this is another agreement we've had for three years. And we really, uh, need to outsource the expertise in running and programming the, the, the equipment because we don't have the expertise on staff. And it's a, it represents about a 5% renewal a year, which is sort of in line with kind of how rates are going today. And so I'd recommend we renew this as well. And both of these will be in the, uh, September final board meeting packet for approval.
Okay. Uh, and the costs of that one are on page five of the agreement. It's nine, 9,994 for year one, 10,494 for year two and 11,018 for year three. Um, any questions about either of these agreements, contracts? Okay. So those will be approved at the.
At the second.
Second meeting. Great.
Mm-hmm.
Or they will be up for approval.
Up for approval. Right.
Changed my language. Thank you. Uh, all right. Then that moves us to, uh, item H, Press Policy 109. Uh, let's turn it back over to you.
Yep. So our policy committee met, I think a couple of weeks ago, August 26th, and reviewed Press Packet 109, which had, um, a variety of policies, one of which we had already approved, which was the Anaphylaxis Prevention Response and Management Program. But there were some other ones, um, of note, one that had to do with whether or not the board wanted to institute a maximum time limit on public comment. And we had some discussion about that, but at this point, we are not recommending the establishment of a maximum time limit. Um, we feel like if people want to come and spend their time addressing the board, that they should be able to do that. Um, but we do feel like we have some strong protocols in place for reminding folks of the specific individual time limits. And then potentially we could ask if there is, if we know there's going to be a big group for maybe, um, you know, someone, if there's a spokesperson for a group, that would be great. Um, but we really felt as a committee that, uh, we wanted folks to feel comfortable to come and express their opinions.
So that's not, that's not referring to individual maximum time.
That was a maximum time limit.
Well, I had a question about the way that was worded actually because, um, that's what I understood was the case. But in the policy, it says, we don't necessarily want to limit the time we give any community member to speak. And that's not how we do it now. So I just wanted to clarify where we're suggesting, could we do have a five-minute limit for?
Good catch. No, the individual limit does not change.
No, individual limit doesn't change.
We don't want to set a limit for overall.
So sorry about that.
Okay. Okay. I just want to make sure I understood it. Yeah, that I would agree with. I would have maybe some discussion among the other one, but.
Unless, unless individuals requested in advance.
Right. Which we've had happen even recently. Yeah.
Is that in the minutes? We need to adjust the minutes.
Yeah, it's in the minutes.
Okay.
Yeah. But it was, hasn't it always been three?
Three, yes.
Three, and I guess we've increased it to five with permission, right?
Well, the president has the.
Right.
Okay, we need to adjust the minutes.
Flex it as necessary, but yeah.
Thank you for clarifying that. That was my only question.
Yeah, because it said the, the choice is there. We do not want to establish a maximum time limit for public comment, which is the choice we're recommending.
That's for the whole time period a lot. It's everybody.
We don't want to be like, you know, one hour for everybody to.
Right. Then I, yeah, I would, I would definitely agree with that.
There are, there are circumstances where you might want to. And so hopefully the policy reads giving the.
And there is still discussion that's to do it if needed.
Okay.
And then the other one, uh, of note really that we hadn't adopted already was the one having to do with, um, licensed and non-licensed staff having the same benefits when called for jury duty or court duty as witnesses. And although we aren't contractually obligated to do that with non-licensed staff, we feel it's only fair to do that for all of our staff members. So I have consistent policies. So those will be up, um, for action and approval at the next meeting. So please let me know if you have any other questions on that packet.
Great. Thanks for that highlight. Anything else before we move on? Okay. That concludes the discussion presentation portion of the evening. So we'll move on to public comment. Again, there's nobody in the room. Anybody else?
No other comments.
Looking to join us? Okay.
Andy, when are we going to talk about the, the whole notion of potentially moving to one board meeting a month?
So that I have on for an additional agenda item. It'll probably come in October. Um, and also location. We've been talking a little bit about location. And what we'll need to discuss is capacity for the room, really. Um, because we have some locations that we could do, we have some rooms that we could do a location. We would have to outfit it with technology. But really what the board would need to give direction on is what, what size room do we really want to outfit with the right technology so that we can keep our public participation at the level that it is with the TV and the video and audio recording? If we didn't want to do it here. So I'll add that to an additional, probably October.
Yeah, I'd like to put that as soon as possible. I think that's great. Okay. Thanks for bringing that, Mark. Uh, and no public comment. Okay. So then with that being said, uh, we can move on to adjournment. So may I have a motion to adjourn the September 13th, 2022, committee of the whole meeting at 8:05 PM? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We are adjourned. Thank you.